Welcome to the Texas Department of Transportation Houston District's Virtual Public Hearing for the Farm-to-Market 529 Improvement Project from State Highway 99, otherwise known as the Grand Parkway, to FM 362. This is a prerecorded presentation. My name is Daisy Arona. I am part of the project team working on this project. I would like to welcome you and thank you for participating in this public hearing. Two public meetings have been held for the FM 529 Improvement Project. The first public meeting was held in April 2019, and the second public meeting was held in June 2020. This hearing presentation is available for viewing starting on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. During the virtual public hearing, you may pause the presentation and navigate forward or backward using your video player. If you experience technical difficulties with the public hearing, please call Jason Holloman at 713-802-5137. You may also request special accommodation assistance to access the public hearing information and materials, and request language interpretation needs other than English and Spanish. The methods for submitting a public comment on the project will be explained at the end of this presentation. This virtual public hearing is being held in conjunction with an in-person public hearing, which will be held on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Patricia E. Petto High School Cafeteria located at 23111 Stockdick School Road, Katy, Texas 77493. The information presented in the virtual public hearing and the in-person public hearing is identical, and the opportunities to comment do not differ. The FM 529 Improvement Project is anticipated to be federally funded. Due to the project receiving federal funds, TechDOT is required to take a hard look at the potential environmental consequences of the proposed project. The process that is followed is called the National Environmental Policy Act Process, otherwise known as NEPA. The NEPA process results in documentation that is provided to a decision-maker so the decision-maker may make an informed decision on whether or not to proceed with the project. On December 9th, 2019, TechDOT received a signed memorandum of understanding from the Federal Highway Administration that permits TechDOT to assume responsibility from the Federal Highway Administration for reviewing and improving certain assigned NEPA projects. This review and approval process applies to this project. This virtual public hearing with an in-person option is being held to obtain final input on the preferred alternative for the FM 529 Improvement Project. You are encouraged to submit comments on the proposed improvements after reviewing the hearing materials and listening to this presentation. In this presentation, I will describe the proposed project and explain the purpose of the virtual public hearing, provide an overview of the environmental studies being performed, explain TechDOT's right-of-way process, explain the next steps in the project development process, and outline the methods for submitting comments. The elected official letters for this public hearing were mailed on Thursday, August 4th, 2022. Notices were mailed to adjacent property owners on Friday, August 5th, 2022. The notice for this public hearing was published in La Voz on Wednesday, August 10th, 2022, and in the Katy Times on Thursday, August 11th, 2022. Postcards were also mailed to community residents beginning Friday, August 12th, 2022, and informal hearing advertisements were distributed within the community during the week of August 15th, 2022. Information was posted to the TechDOT webpage on August 3rd, 2022, and advertised on TechDOT's social media beginning in mid-August. The project study limits extend along FM 529 from State Highway 99 or the Grand Parkway to FM 362 for a length of approximately 12 miles. The project is located in both Harris and Waller Counties. Land along FM 529, especially between the Grand Parkway and Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road, is experiencing rapid growth. Several residential communities currently are being constructed, and the Katy Independent School District is planning to build a new multi-school campus in this area. The proposed project is being developed to address two major needs along the project corridor. First, the current two-lane undivided roadway doesn't provide adequate mobility to accommodate traffic volumes projected for the next 25 years. Currently, the roadway between the Grand Parkway and Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road does not provide adequate capacity, which affects mobility. Second, crash rates on this segment of FM 529 are higher than average crash rates on similar roadways in Texas. The purpose of the proposed project is to improve mobility and safety within the project corridor. This slide shows the timeline for the FM 529 Improvement Project. The roadway design and environmental analysis for this project were initiated by TechDOT in July of 2018. Two public meetings have been held for the project: an in-person meeting on April 30th, 2019, and a virtual public meeting on June 9th, 2020, to present the project to the public and to solicit comments. Documentation of these public meetings can be found on the project webpage. Following the public meetings, TechDOT reviewed the comments received and continued to refine the schematic and environmental analysis. This public hearing is being held to present the proposed improvements and the findings of the environmental analysis, and to receive your comments on the preferred alternative. If you are interested in the information presented and comments received from the two public meetings, you can find them on the FM 529 project page on the TechDOT website. Information on how to access the project page on the TechDOT website will be provided at the end of this presentation. The TechDOT Houston District conducted an extensive public involvement program for the FM 529 project. This included both stakeholder and public outreach activities. Throughout the alternative development and preliminary design process, TechDOT met with key stakeholders, including major land developers along FM 529. In April 2019, TechDOT held an in-person public meeting, which had 86 attendees. TechDOT received 57 comments during the comment period for the first public meeting. The second public meeting was held virtually in June 2020. The virtual public meeting presentation video drew over 500 views, and 11 participants provided comments. The comments received during the public meeting comment periods and the comments from stakeholders were considered during the continued planning of the project. Now let's talk about level of service, or how congested FM 529 is today and what is projected for the future. Level of service is illustrated in the graphic on the right. Level of service ranges from A, which is the free-flowing traffic as shown in light green, to F, which is heavily congested as shown in red. By the year 2045, traffic volumes are projected to grow to almost six times the existing volumes on FM 529 between the Grand Parkway and Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road, and four times the existing volumes between Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road and FM 362. With no improvements, FM 529 will experience moderate to high congestion in 2045. At this level of congestion, the roadway is projected to operate at levels of service D and E. The intersections at the Grand Parkway, Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road, and FM 362 are projected to operate at a level of service F. For steady purposes, making no improvements to the roadway other than routine maintenance is known as the "no-build" alternative. With the proposed FM 529 improvements, which include widening the FM 529 roadway from the Grand Parkway to FM 362, through the year 2045, the roadway is projected to operate at a level of service D between the Grand Parkway and Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road, and level of service B between Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road and FM 362. Regarding safety, TechDOT analyzed crashes along the FM 529 corridor for the five-year period from 2013 through 2017. The map on the top shows the location of each of the crashes. The primary crash hotspot locations along FM 529 include the Grand Parkway, FM 2855, Pitts Road, Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road, Peak Road, and Katy-Hockley Road. For example, during the five-year period, there were 174 crashes on FM 529, with 23% or 40 of the crashes occurring at the Grand Parkway intersection, and 18% or 31 of the crashes occurring at the FM 2855 intersection. The chart at the bottom presents the crash rate along FM 529. The state average crash rate for a similar roadway is 124 crashes per 100 million vehicle miles, as shown by the red line on the chart. Crashes occurring on FM 529 between 2014 and 2017 were above the state average. FM 529 in the project area currently has one 12-foot-wide travel lane in each direction, four-foot-wide shoulders on the outside of the travel lanes, and an open-ditch drainage system. The average roadway right-of-way width throughout the project area is 120 feet. The FM 529 proposed improvements include: reconstructing the roadway and increasing the number of travel lanes from two to four lanes (two lanes in each direction) in the rural section between FM 362 and Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road, and six lanes (three lanes in each direction) from Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road to SH 99; installing raised medians and left-turn bays to improve safety and mobility; reconstructing and widening the existing bridges at South Maid Creek and Bear Creek; constructing pedestrian and bicycle facilities; and converting the existing open-ditch drainage to a closed stormwater system between Porter Road and SH 99. Intersections along FM 529 will be evaluated for new traffic signals that would be implemented as appropriate based on the outcome of future traffic signal warrant studies. TechDOT has developed proposed typical sections for FM 529 to match the needs of the surrounding communities. The urban layout shown in the top image is from SH 99 or the Grand Parkway to Porter Road. This section includes proposed widening on FM 529 from two to six lanes (three lanes in each travel direction), divided by an 18-foot-wide raised median with openings, with then a reduced right-of-way of 150 feet to accommodate recent development. Bicycle and pedestrian facilities would include 10-foot-wide shared-use paths along both sides of the roadway. This section also includes a proposed closed storm sewer system to convey storm water. The urban layout continues from Porter Road to Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road. This section includes proposed widening on FM 529 from two to six lanes (three lanes in each travel direction), divided by an 18-foot-wide raised medians with openings. Bicycle and pedestrian facilities would include 10-foot-wide shared-use paths along both sides of the roadway. This section also includes proposed 12-foot-wide outside shoulders and an open-ditch drainage system to convey storm water within a proposed right-of-way of 180 feet. This image illustrates the proposed rural layout from Katy-Hockley Cut-off Road to FM 362. This section includes proposed widening of FM 529 from two to four lanes (two lanes in each travel direction), divided by an 18-foot-wide raised median with openings and 12-foot-wide outside shoulders. Bicycle and pedestrian facilities would include 10-foot-wide shared-use paths along both sides of the roadway. This rural section would have a typical right-of-way width of 180 feet and would include an open-ditch drainage system to convey storm water. This map illustrates the existing floodway and the 100-year and 500-year floodplains. As shown, most of the FM 529 project area within Harris County is included in the floodway. The roadway profile, including the raised median, has been evaluated to determine the hydraulic impact on existing drainage conditions. The proposed roadway improvements, including the raised median and drainage improvements, would not adversely impact existing conditions outside TechDOT's right-of-way. Drainage design options include the upsizing and adding of cross-drain culverts that would facilitate the flow of water from the north side of the roadway to the south side. In addition, the proposed design includes median openings that would allow water to flow from the north side of the roadway to the south side. The current phase of the proposed project includes the completion of a preliminary drainage study that identified two detention ponds to be located adjacent to FM 529, one on the north side at Bear Creek and one on the south side at South Maid Creek. To mitigate against drainage impacts within TechDOT's right-of-way associated with the proposed improvements, during the next design phase, a comprehensive drainage analysis and modeling would be completed, and any impacts would be mitigated within TechDOT's right-of-way to ensure drainage would not adversely impact existing conditions outside TechDOT's right-of-way. The design of the detention ponds would be refined during the detailed design phase, which would include a detailed comprehensive drainage analysis. TechDOT considered various factors when developing the proposed roadway alternatives to provide equitable access for all roadway users, including bicyclists and pedestrians. These considerations include: the roadway's proximity to schools, access to community resources, and access to commercial and retail businesses. The proposed FM 529 improvements incorporate state and federal guidelines for providing pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Here is a screenshot of the legend for the schematics that you can find on the project website. The legend is included on each page of the schematic, so you can reference it during your review. The screenshot on the left shows the various types of lines that you will see. Of particular note are the red dashed lines that show the existing right-of-way and the thick black dashed line that identifies the proposed right-of-way. The screenshot on the right shows the colors that fill the proposed design. These colors identify the limits and major aspects of the project. Let's walk through them. The yellow color identifies the proposed main travel lanes on FM 529. The proposed raised median is shown in light blue, and the existing and proposed bridge widenings in red. The proposed shared use paths are shown in magenta. The proposed project is consistent with the Houston-Galveston Area Council's 2045 Regional Transportation Plan for the eight-county Houston-Galveston region. The proposed project would be funded with a combination of federal and state funds for a total of approximately $123 million. The project team has evaluated the potential environmental impacts that could occur as a result of constructing the proposed improvements. Technical reports documenting the analysis and conclusions of these studies are available for review on the project webpage at www.tech.gov. Keyword search "FM 529 from SH 99." TechDOT considered air quality, archaeological resources, biological resources, community impacts, hazardous materials, non-archaeological historical resources, traffic noise, and water resources. The project was designed to avoid or minimize impacts to the greatest extent practicable. Overall, impacts to environmental resources as a result of the proposed project would be minimal. Areas that have received a focused review include cultural and natural resources, community impacts, environmental justice, floodplains, floodways, hazardous materials, and traffic noise. Projected traffic volumes on the improved roadway are not expected to exceed 140,000 vehicles per day. TechDOT's studies have demonstrated that the carbon monoxide air quality standard is unlikely to be exceeded for projects with average annual daily traffic below 140,000 vehicles. The proposed project would not result in changes to the project location, traffic volumes, the types of vehicles traveling on the roadway, or any other factors. Therefore, a meaningful increase in emissions of mobile-source air toxics is not anticipated. The proposed project is located within an area that has been designated by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency as a non-attainment area for the Ozone National Ambient Air Quality Standard. In non-attainment areas, it is necessary to demonstrate that a project conforms with local and state plans relative to air quality. The proposed project is consistent with the Houston-Galveston Area Council's Regional Transportation Plan. To date, no intensive archaeological survey of the project area has been conducted due to a lack of permission to access all properties within the project corridor. Approximately 15 acres of the project area were not able to be investigated because permission to access the properties was not granted. An intensive pedestrian survey, augmented with shovel testing where applicable, would be conducted when right-of-entry is granted for the properties or when right-of-way is acquired for the proposed project. Investigations for biological resources were conducted within the project corridor. Agricultural and residential development in the project area has limited the overall quality of available habitat for wildlife. Several federally listed species are known to occur in Harris and Waller Counties. Field investigations conducted in the project corridor by qualified biologists revealed that the project area is primarily rural in nature. No suitable habitat was identified for any of the federally listed species. The proposed project is within the range of and contains suitable habitats for state-listed threatened species and species of greatest conservation need. However, the proposed project is not anticipated to adversely affect any of these species. During the development phase of the project, TechDOT selected an alternative that minimized right-of-way acquisition to reduce impacts to adjacent property owners. No residential displacements are anticipated to occur. Even though the need for additional right-of-way has been minimized, the proposed project would potentially displace one business and impact one power-line support tower and one unoccupied structure. Potential impacts to adjacent properties and structures are shown in the next slide. TechDOT would provide assistance to potentially displaced businesses and other affected property owners. The proposed project would improve safety and mobility by constructing additional travel lanes with an 18-foot-wide raised median with openings. Within both the urban and rural sections of the roadway, there would be continuous dedicated shared-use paths on both sides of the roadway for bicyclists and pedestrians. This exhibit depicts the locations of three properties potentially impacted by the new right-of-way for the proposed FM 529 improvements. The first potential impact is an unoccupied structure that may be associated with agricultural activities on the adjacent land parcels located on the south side of FM 529, approximately 1.5 miles west of FM 2855. The second is toys, trailers, and equipment located at 25825 FM 529 Katy, Texas 77493. That may be adversely affected by the encroachment of the proposed right-of-way onto the business property. The third is a support tower associated with overhead utility lines located north of the existing FM 529 roadway approximately 1/10 of a mile east of Peak Road. A hazardous material's initial site assessment, also known as a hazmat ISA, was performed to determine the potential for encountering hazardous substances and/or contamination within the vicinity of the proposed project that may be of environmental concern. Further investigation revealed that an unresolved site may be of environmental concern. The unresolved site is a plugged oil or gas well in the eastern portion of the proposed project. Additional investigation of the site will be conducted to determine if the previous oil and gas activities may have affected soil or groundwater in the area of proposed project right-of-way. If other unanticipated hazardous materials are encountered during construction, TechDOT and/or the contractor would be notified, and steps would be taken to protect personnel and the environment. Any unanticipated hazardous materials encountered during construction would be addressed according to applicable federal, state, and local regulations per TechDOT standard specifications. Project historians surveyed the project area for non-archaeological historical resources and identified two ranches that may be eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places: the Iba Ava Ranch and the Sammy Beckendorf Farm. The project would require a small area of new right-of-way less than 1% from each property along the existing right-of-way. The proposed project would pose no direct or indirect impacts to the historical resources. The project would be considered a minimal de minimis impact to each parcel. A de minimis impact means that there would be no adverse effect on the features, attributes, or activities associated with the historical property identified for protection. The proposed project activities would not have the potential to adversely affect historical resources; therefore mitigation coordination with the state Historic Preservation Officer would not be required. A traffic noise analysis was conducted for the proposed project using the Federal Highway Administration's traffic noise modeling software, TNM 2.5. Existing and predicted traffic noise levels were modeled. Based on the modeling conducted, predicted noise levels at the modeled receivers either remained the same or increased slightly. Although there would be increases in traffic volumes, traffic noise levels would not rise to an actionable level as defined by the Federal Highway Administration. Therefore, none of the receivers included in the noise modeling would experience a traffic noise impact. Because none of the modeled receivers are anticipated to be impacted by traffic noise, no noise barriers, such as noise walls, are recommended to be included in the project. Four water resources occurring within the project area were identified as being potentially jurisdictional waters of the United States, meaning that they are regulated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. These resources include two named creeks, which are Bear Creek and South Maid Creek, an unnamed tributary to South Maid Creek, and a possible wetland in the area of the proposed stormwater detention basin near Bear Creek north of FM 529. These identified water resources may be impacted by construction of the proposed roadway improvements and the associated stormwater detention areas. Impacts of the identified water resources would be assessed during the future detailed design phase of the project. These impacts would be authorized prior to construction through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Nationwide Permit Program. This concludes the discussion on the potential environmental impacts. Approximately 109 acres of additional right-of-way would be required for the proposed project. One potential commercial displacement and two structural displacements may occur. No residential displacements are anticipated. TechDOT offers relocation counseling and financial assistance to residents and businesses that are displaced by the acquisition of highway right-of-way in accordance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970. TechDOT would provide assistance to potentially displaced businesses and other affected property owners. This public hearing is being held to present the proposed project, including the schematic design for the preferred alternative and the associated environmental technical reports, and to gather public and stakeholder input. After the comment period closes, the project team will review the comments received and prepare the public hearing documentation. The public hearing documentation will be posted on the project webpage when complete. The next steps include refining the schematics and finalizing the environmental documentation. Provided the environmental documents and process are approved, the project would then move into detailed design, and right-of-way acquisition could begin. Although the proposed project is not currently funded, it is anticipated that state and federal funding would be secured. Construction would be scheduled once funding is identified. The project is estimated to cost approximately $123 million. The project webpage contains all materials presented in this public hearing, including this presentation in both English and Spanish, exhibit boards, the environmental constraints map, a comment card, a project fact sheet, the schematics, and the environmental analysis as documented in the technical reports. The schematic design provides a more in-depth look at details such as intersection improvements, shared-use paths, medians, and proposed median openings, and the existing and proposed right-of-way. The proposed schematic design files are large and may require more time to download than the other project materials. This concludes the project information for the FM 529 Improvement Project. The next few slides describe the ways you may provide written comments and verbal testimony on the proposed project. TechDOT encourages you to review the materials posted on the project webpage and to provide verbal or written comments. You can submit comments in the following ways: By phone: Call the project phone line 832-409-2567 to leave verbal testimony. On a comment card: Download the comment card from the project webpage, www.tech.gov. Keyword search "FM 529 from SH 99." At the in-person hearing: Fill out the comment card at the public hearing and drop it in the comment box. By email: Email the comment form to ho-pio@tech.gov. Mail the comment card to tech.houstondistrict@attention. Director of Project Development, PO Box 1386, Houston, Texas 77251-1386. Comments must be received or postmarked by Thursday, September 15th, 2022 to be included in the public hearing documentation. Responses to verbal and written comments received during the comment period will be included in the public hearing documentation that will be posted on the project webpage when complete. Lastly, don't hesitate to contact us with any questions at any time during project development. Please feel free to contact Jason Holloman, the TechDOT Environmental Coordinator at the Houston District Office, at 713-802-5137, or Colin Dishman, the TechDOT Right-of-Way Project Manager, at 713-802-5704, with any questions or comments. Follow us on Twitter for ongoing road closures and construction updates on the Houston for ongoing road closures and construction updates on the Houston District Twitter page. You can also keep up with TechDOT News on our Facebook page. Questions and comments can be submitted at any time during the project development process, but comments will only be included as part of the official public hearing documentation if received during the comment period. Thank you for your participation and interest in this project. Please submit comments by Thursday, September 15th, 2022. This concludes our public hearing presentation for the FM 529 Improvement Project.
November 7th, 2000, was the last deathless day on roadways in Texas. That means for nearly 22 years, at least one person has died every single day. We all have a part to play to change that. This message is that reminder: to end the streak of deaths on Texas highways, we need drivers and passengers to act more responsibly and help us reach our goal of zero deaths by 2050. Texans can play a major role in ending fatal crashes with a few simple driving habits: wear seatbelts, drive the speed limit, put away the phone and other distractions, and never drive under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So please, do your part and share this message with your friends and family.